Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April, excuse me, Wednesday, April 25th meeting of the Wakefield School Committee. A very rare Wednesday meeting. In the absence right now of our chairman, Mr. Tirow, who did not seek a reelection, and we wish him and Kate Morgan, of course, nothing but the best, I, as vice chair, will step in to run the beginning of all of the meeting. So, good evening all, and I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if we could begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to also begin the meeting with the reading of the mission statement of the Wakefield Public Schools. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next, we have the public comment period, as we do at every meeting. If any member of the public would like to address the school committee on any topic, they're welcome and invited to do so now. Seeing none, let me move on, and if I may, just, I'd like to, certainly on behalf of the committee, welcome our two newest members, who were successful in yesterday's town election, Colleen Guida and Amy Purcell. We welcome both of you to the table. So, now begins a thoughtful, and earnest, and exciting career in the Wakefield Public Schools, at a whole different time and slice of life, so, welcome and best of luck with everything. I'd like to call up next, representing the students of the Wakefield Public Schools, we have an eighth grader with us from the Galvin Middle School, Stephanie Curran, who's going to speak to us about Project 351. So Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, I'm Andrew Tatchwald. For those that may not know, I had a lot of familiar faces. We, I've been involved with Project 351 for a couple of years now, as the assistant principal, usually volunteer to go down and partake in the day. A great day, the Galvin Middle School's been doing it for, oh, gosh, six, seven, eight years now. And basically, Project 351, some of you may be familiar with it, one eighth grader from every town in the entire state is selected to descend onto Boston and partake in like a leadership summit, give back to the community type of service with an eighth grader from every town, which is pretty impressive to see, you know, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds in a huge setting. We got so big, we used to hold it at Faneuil Hall, now we have to go to JFK Library to start, it's just, it's that big. And we, they come from all over, from the islands, out from the western part of the state, some of them get up really, really early, and so, this year was kind of unique, we had a couple of snowstorms, we had to do it on a Sunday, we got delayed a couple of times, weren't sure if it was actually going to happen, right, shocker, so, but we were able to get it in, and Stephanie was selected from the Galvin Middle School, and so, basically, Project 351, real quick, it's just, you know, teaching kids how to give back and get involved in their community, and they do a couple of different service projects that day to catapult them to come back to the community, and Stephanie will talk a little bit about what she did when she came back here as well, and some of the efforts that she's engaged with that. The, usually it happens on Martin Luther King Day weekend, it happens on a Saturday, but like I said, there was a few snowstorms that delayed it, and so we had to do it on a Saturday, on a Sunday. And they, we go across the whole, the whole city, we go to different places, like the Greater Boston Food Bank, we go to, we went to the, we went to the State House, Stephanie and I, with a couple of other kiddos, they go to Cradles to Crayons, they go down, they go into Pine Street Inn, they make food, they do some inventory, they do clothing sorts, just a huge, huge production. And so Stephanie's going to talk a little bit about kind of her day and what happened, and we'll go through some of the slides together. That was us leaving from the, up in Woburn, they pick us up, a couple of kids in the area. You talk maybe a little bit about what it's like to get on the bus and kind of like, the first time you see some of those kids.
Yeah, it was really exciting to just have all that positive energy going around, and like, knowing that we were all going to do stuff for the greater good together, and it was really exciting.
Yeah, and so they put the kids into different service hero groups, all the kids, and so, service hero groups are made up by some people who have dedicated their lives to giving back, and they've done people such as former Salucci, First Lady Salucci, and Malala's a group, there was Martin Richard, you know, from the Boston Marathon as a group, and so they try to honor some of these heroes, and the kids are organized that way. We started off, like we said, at the JFK Library, we had a chance to listen to the governor and his wife do kind of like a town interview with WBZ reporter, Lisa Hughes, that's right, and they talked a little bit about that, and that's when the First Lady talked a little bit about her project that she undertakes with the Department of Children and Families, and that's actually what we had a chance to go and do at the State House. There's just a couple of other pictures, that was Jane Richards and whatnot, and so we went to the State House, and we can kind of talk about what you're seeing in some of these pictures, and Stephanie had a chance to do while she was there.
So, in this picture, we're making blankets, and that was for a homeless shelter, so that was really exciting. In this picture, we're taking a picture with Charlie Baker, because his wife was actually one of the foundations that we were making hygiene packs for there, so that was really nice to meet him.
She has a foundation called Wonder Fund, that provides kiddos that, you know, the Department of Children and Families have immediately kind of gotten involved, and they might need clothes, and that, you know, the toiletries, and even like, school supplies, and so we, it was just an assembly line of just getting bags and bags and bags and bags together for them. Made some encouraging cards to the kids too, to put in the bag, so when they saw it and read it, these kids could be inspired and get some encouraging words. And then we come back to the JFK Library, kind of have an end of the day celebration, it's an all-day event, and then, we talk, they really prepare the kids about what to do next, so Steph, we could talk a little bit about what you did.
Yeah, so, we had a conference call every Monday after that, and so they really well-informed us, and so, we went out into our communities, and we all did service projects for Cradles to Crayons. So, we were encouraged to collect gently-used clothing and shoes, and so, I did a drive at the Galvin Middle School, and also at my dance, also at my dance studio, and I had about eleven of my friends help me decorate boxes, and put up flyers and posters, and then also, once the drive was over, we had to sort all the clothing together, so.
Which is kind of really what it's about, is coming back and inspiring some of your friends and classmates to get involved in other communities and other organizations you might be a part of, so it was really cool to see them all, you know, Stephanie rallied them, and they were, I mean, they were like absolutely thrilled to be helping out, so it was really cool to see that, you know, take some time after school, their busy schedule to sort through all of that. And so that's Project 351, that's kind of what we did this year, and the great thing Steph is doing, they do have a reunion in May coming up, and I haven't, we haven't talked, if Stephanie's going to it or whatnot, she's got a busy schedule, and have a dancer and have a soccer player, she does so much, so, that's kind of on the horizon coming up in May. That's it.
Well, that's certainly, certainly a wonderful story, and congratulations on being selected, first of all, I saw one of the earlier slides, was it fifteen students were nominated, is that what it said?
Yep, it was, yep.
And so being selected from among the top fifteen is quite, is quite an honor, so congratulations on that and for everything that you did. Any members of the committee have any thoughts or comments or questions for Stephanie?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Leakos.
The JFK Library, do you remember the famous quote that President Kennedy said about service to your country?
Oh, ask not what you can do for your country, but, I mean, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country.
Exactly, and that's such a powerful idea, and you're living it, and so you give us hope with your sense of service, that's really, really important, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you again, I'm sure your parents are proud, your family's proud, your town is proud, so thank you for everything, and of course, Mr. Teague, thank you for your support and work behind the scenes.
It's fun, it's always a great day. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we have the consent agenda to go through, if I may ask Mr. Callanan to read the motion for the approval of minutes.
I move the school committee approve the minutes of the school committee meetings of March 27th, 2018, and April 10th, 2018, and the minutes of the school, and accept the minutes of the school committee policy and planning subcommittee of March 27th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on, the next part of the agenda is the annual reorganization of committee officers, and I would accept a motion for the election of the chair. Mr. Leakos.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chairman, not only because you're sitting in the seat, I would like to nominate Thomas Markham to be the chairman of the Wakefield School Committee for our coming year.
Second.
Thank you, other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you, thank you, thank you all. Now I will accept nominations for the election of vice chair.
I nominate that Chris Callanan be the vice chairman of the Wakefield School Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Do you accept?
I accept.
Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thirdly, the election of the payroll signer.
Have you had any conversation with anybody about that?
I have not, I am presently the payroll signer, and have been for a couple of years, it is not a daunting task, but it is, it is one that is quite frequent, that would be served if someone is available on a bi-weekly basis, or maybe a little more often, to attend, to stop in at the superintendent's office, meet with Mr. Piffling ever so briefly, and sign the payroll warrants on behalf of the committee. It's not particularly challenging, but nonetheless, it's a critical, important part of making sure that employees are paid properly and in a timely manner and so forth. So, is there a motion for payroll signer?
Any interest?
I'll be, I'll, sounds not daunting.
Okay, okay, so we'll take a volunteer, so, Mr. Leakos, would you?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Ann as a payroll signer.
Okay, very good.
And I would second that.
And you obviously accept, you volunteered.
Yeah.
Any further nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Ann Fortier for payroll signer? Very good, okay, well, moving, moving, moving right along.
Tom, before we move on, can I just make a? It occurred to me tonight, that we still call our chairman chairman, and our vice chairman chairman, given that the voters spoke pretty clearly about gender-neutral language in town government, I wonder if we might ask the policy subcommittee to consider changing our nomenclature to gender neutrality.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, certainly, I think that's a terrific idea, and it's probably something that we could even just begin to do as we individually see appropriate, certainly a reasonable thing to do. Yep. Okay, moving along, next on the agenda, it came up at the last meeting, that we were to appoint additional, additional members to the Human Rights Commission. We have some material in our packets with regard to some community members who have volunteered to serve, hopefully you've had a chance to read through that material, I would like Dr. Smith to make a remark, if she would like to, with regard to this.
I just would like to contribute that Pina Mascherelli Patel, I've really observed her work as a member of the current board over the last three years, and some of her work prior to that, and she has just brought the passion and the experience and the commitment to the Human Rights Commission, so I would just really advocate for, you know, really, you know, continuing her role on the commission, as you consider new applications as well.
Just to clarify, but even though we've added an additional seat tonight, we're only voting on one? So, voting on two?
I believe we were voting on two.
That's right, that's right, okay.
Is that two?
Two.
Yep, and we're voting on two, and we have four applicants, or four volunteers. And the term of each of these, of both of these appointments, the same length of service? They're both three years?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's what I thought. What's, what's that? So, if we, if any member is prepared to make a motion, we'll have two seats to fill, we'll do them separately. Any member would like to make a motion to appoint one of our volunteers?
I would certainly like to nominate Pina Mascherelli Patel as one of the other two members.
Okay, motion's been made for Pina Mascherelli, any, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I would like to further support Dr. Smith's view of Mrs. Mascherelli, she is a giver, and is devoted to this particular commission, and was one of the founding members, would continue that history and this, and her support for the causes, they've been doing a great deal of work since the inception of this commission, and she's really been an integral part of it.
Indeed, yeah, here, here. Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. We have a second member to fill, also for a three-year term. I'd accept nominations for second, Mr. Leakos.
I'd like to nominate Isabel Castro Escudero, her background seemed really interesting to me, obviously, we've got a growing Latino population, I think it would be excellent to have broader cultural diversity on the Human Rights Commission, someone with teaching, we're going to have a presentation tonight on world languages and teaching Spanish, and seems to have all the right background and interest for this kind of position, so.
Okay, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I, I would like to also support Ms. Escudero, did I say that correctly? Dr. Escudero. One of the comments in her letter for seeking this appointment is, "My belief is that if we educate our little ones and their families to be welcoming to our, to other origins, languages, and national histories, the chance of eliminating prejudice and intolerance will decrease." That really struck me, and it's in response to, you know, some specific ideas that I think she would like to bring to the Human Rights Commission, so I think, I see her as a leader, and as someone who would be fully engaged based upon what she submitted.
Very good. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Certainly, I'd like to thank both of these new appointments for stepping forward and volunteering, and wish them nothing but the best in their three years of service, but also, of course, like to also thank the other two, who came forward to volunteer for this important work, and encourage, encourage the others to stay involved, stay committed, and there will certainly be other opportunities in the future, so, thank you for, thank you for the, to the, to the four volunteers. Moving on, the next part of our agenda is the superintendent's remarks and reports. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Markham, so, I'd like to call up for our curriculum recommendations, this is always a really exciting time of year, one of my favorite meetings of the year, Assistant Superintendent Doug Lyons, World Language Curriculum Coordinator Erin Manzi, and Science Curriculum Coordinator Dr. Jennifer Thomas, to present to us what they've worked on throughout the entire year.
Good evening, thank you very much for having us, we appreciate it, this is a kind of a happy time for us, and we're excited to present kind of the work that's been happening over the course of the year. You know, I think curriculum, our curriculum review cycle, and how we are kind of bringing curriculum into the district, and including kind of larger numbers of teachers on the front side of this work, but also incorporating it into our professional development, I think has really grown over the last couple of years, and I think that the work of Erin Manzi, this is her first year, and the work of Jen Thomas has really been exemplary, and this, what we're going to present tonight, just so that, to kind of create a reference back to, a through line back to where we started, our instructional strategy, the number two item on our instructional strategy, which lists initiatives, is rigorous curriculum. So not only is this guided by the curriculum review cycle, the initiative, and kind of this represents kind of year-long work that we've been doing, that really, we started right at the start of the year, and part of it actually, we started in the summer. So, we're particularly pleased to kind of share this with you. So tonight, our goal is to talk about the work that's been done, and piloting and reviewing materials in world language, science, as well as health and wellness, and without further ado, I'd like to just turn it over to Erin Manzi to start the conversation.
Okay, good, thanks so much. No worries. Good evening, some of you know me very well, for those who don't, again, my name is Erin Manzi, I've been part of the Wakefield Public Schools for twenty years, as a middle school Spanish teacher, and this was my first year as world language curriculum coordinator. It's been a great experience, working with the middle school teachers and the high school teachers, especially when we have a chance to all work together, and this year, we did have a lot of opportunity to do that, especially during our five-part series, during some of our half-day PD, it gave us time to collaborate, really take a deeper look at our curriculum, analyze the curriculum, think about where we are, where we want to go, we explored new resources to expand and improve the curriculum. I think most of all, though, it gave us the time to strengthen our relationships together. We haven't really had that much time to work together over the past twenty years, and really to strengthen and bridge, create that bridge from the middle school to the high school. Our primary focus this year was really, again, looking at new resources to expand and improve our current curriculum. Our goal is to create a curriculum that the students have the ability to develop language proficiency and appreciation for cultural diversity, that's our main goal. I believe strong communication skills and intercultural competence are essential 21st century skills that our students need to be beneficial in their life, at this stage of their life, but also when they enter, when they leave us, and they enter the global workforce. Our life is interconnected and interdependent more than ever, and these are skills that companies will be looking for in our students. To kind of sum it up, I am a strong believer in world language, I feel very passionate about it, and I feel it's an essential part of a child's experience here in our system, and I'm proud of the work our department has done, and will continue to do, create a great experience for our students. Before I continue, I need to thank all of the teachers that participated in the pilot, there were thirteen of us, actually fourteen of us altogether, they worked really hard, and I'm proud of the work they've done. So, I'm going to go into this, yeah, all right, oh no, sorry, go back, all right, just to give a brief overview of what the world language program looks like in our district, starting in grade five, grade five students have a half-year exploratory course of Spanish and French. Entering grade six, they choose a language, either French or Spanish, to study for the next three years. Upon entering high school, they have the ability to stay with that language that they're currently studying, or they can switch. There are four languages offered at the high school, Spanish, French, Italian, and Latin, and then there is a two-year graduation requirement at the high school. So the curriculum review process, what it looked like for us this year, back in September, we started Phase One, and again, Phase One consisted of teachers attending professional development, during that time, we reviewed state standards, curriculum maps, and resources. At the end of Stage One, looking at all of our curriculums for all four contents, Spanish and French, although have strong components to their curriculum, really needed updated components for technology and resources, so it was at this time that we decided to explore new resources for the French and Spanish programs, and potentially pilot something at that time. We did review the Latin curriculum, obviously, and Italian, and both of those curriculums have invested fairly recently in new materials, they were really happy with what the materials they had at that time were doing for them in the classroom, so we decided not to pilot Latin and Italian at that point. Going into Phase Two, two programs were chosen, they were implemented into the classroom, the resources were implemented, teachers had a chance to develop lessons, and discuss the resources in the lessons during PLC time, during professional development time, give some verbal feedback, and at the end of Phase Two, there was a pilot survey, so teachers could give some more formal feedback to me, on how they, how they felt about the programs, and really make a decision from that survey, on which ones we would go with.
Could I interrupt you?
Yeah.
How long were these phases?
Sure, so, to go back to Phase One, I would say, actually started right at the beginning of September, so from September through November, I would say during PLC time, during some of our five-part series is really when Phase One happened, it was in December when we chose the two programs to pilot, so from December through present time is when Phase Two happened.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, Massachusetts Foreign Language Standards, strands, ACTFL, there's a lot of information on this page, I apologize, it's a little small, I crammed everything in on it, we had many discussions regarding the state standards, how our current curriculum aligns with the state standards, how the curriculums that we were looking at, how well do those align with the state standards. The Massachusetts Foreign Language Standards haven't changed since 1999, I don't know what they're waiting for, but they haven't changed in quite a bit. Because of that, MAFLA has endorsed the national standards created by the ACTFL, so it's really those standards that we're following at this point. They're both very similar, the top part, if you see, the five Cs of communication, culture, comparison, connections, and communities, those are still in place, they've expanded the standards a bit, but I really feel the two biggest parts, the two that have changed the most are the core practices, and down the bottom, you can see the can-do statements, proficiency benchmarks, and performance indicators that they've added, and that's, those are parts that were never in place in the Massachusetts standards, and I find those, right now, the most important, really, looking at core practices, looking at can-do statements, again, proficiency benchmarks, and guidelines, and we really focused on those two bottom parts, and looking at what type of curriculum do we want? Are the resources they're giving us, do they support the practices? Are the resources they're giving us, do they support the practices? Do they support these can-do statements? Because it's really, it's really changing how we assess students and what types of instructional strategies we're using in the classroom to help children become proficient in the language. And by the way, for the five-part series, I'd like to focus on those, the core practices next year. I'm already thinking about that ahead, huh? So, the pilot. So, like I said, phase two started in December, so it ran about four months. There were 14, oh, sorry, 13 teachers involved, grades five through 12. The Spanish teachers piloted Alvin Semos and Assisi Lise from McGraw-Hill and Houghton Mifflin. The French teachers piloted Bianchi from Houghton Mifflin and EMC, which is Techebranche. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. I think so. Stuff to guide the recommendation. Like I said, a couple slides back, I created a teacher survey that was guided by the Massachusetts Foreign Language Standards and the ACTF World Readiness Standards. We surveyed the students. I received feedback, again, during PLC time, during a five-part series, on some of the pros and cons to both curriculums. I had the opportunity to go into classrooms down at the middle school and the high school to really see these resources in action. And I actually reached out to some of the other districts to see what programs they were using. Many program, I'm sorry, many school systems in and around the district are also using this program. Some of the results from the survey. Thirteen teachers responded to the survey. At top for the Spanish teachers, 75% preferred Alvin Semos over McGraw-Hill. For the French program, those numbers are deceiving, there's only two French teachers, 100%, it looks like there's so many. There's only two, they both agreed on that one program, so it's not, looks a lot better than it is.
I thought that looked very strong.
Yeah, exactly. It was on that one.
Overwhelming.
Overwhelming, right. The next question was asked to all of the teachers, the French and the Spanish teachers, asking how they feel about the resources and do they support the development of global competency. Everyone agreed, it was just really how strongly they agreed. 65, 62, 62.5% of the teachers strongly agreed that it's supported global competency. 37.5% of teachers agree.
No one disagreed.
No one disagreed. No, no one disagreed. Everyone agreed, but it's just really the level of how strongly you felt about it. And on the bottom, I just, I had some feedback, some nice feedback from the teachers of how they felt about the program. There's even more information on this one. Overall, there are some highlights from the Bianchi and Alvin Semos program. Overall, what my biggest, what I'd like to say about it is that I feel that the program provides resources to develop language proficiency, and just as important is an appreciation of cultural diversity. It provides so many resources to help students improve interpersonal communication skills, immerse themselves in current events, gain cultural knowledge through authentic videos, articles. Teachers have the ability to, in my eyes, create differentiated, engaging lessons for students that really meet the needs of all types of learners at all types, at all academic abilities. They have the ability to modify some of the instruction, a lot of the assessment tools, and they make it user-friendly for teachers to be able to do that. Additional highlights, it is aligned with the ACTFL standards, interactive books, the ebook is interactive, the dashboard is interactive.
Excuse me?
Nope. I don't know, I'm not going to go through every single thing on there. Final recommendation, so for French and Spanish, grades five through 12, the total's 113,000. This includes six years of online digital ed. license. We did a classroom set of books. Not every student is going to need a book. I really think it's necessary to be carrying a book back and forth. I really believe just one classroom set is more than enough because we have the digital online components. Practice workbooks, teacher resources, exam due assessments, and we do get two days of professional development from the company that will come in hopefully early this fall. And then again, really kind of depending on how the teachers feel, how they're moving through the curriculum, if they, how many questions they have, as the year progresses, we'll decide on when that second professional developmental development will be. In addition to that, we did not pilot any programs for Italian and Latin. Lucia D'Amela, the Italian teacher, is greatly invested in the program she's using. Just last year, she went to a professional development with the author of Carissimo, is in love with her. She really believes in her philosophy of teaching. It's very progressive. She's actually come, last year she came to our school and put on a professional development for us. She's fabulous, and I'm hoping to get her back again. So, she's very invested in that program. She needs some additional resources because her program is growing. She actually has 35 more students this year than she had last year, so she needs some more resources, and her AP books are falling apart, so that's why she's getting a couple more AP books. With the Latin, again, his program is growing, not as much as the Italian program, but Chris is looking to use those resources in more of his classes. He was only using them in a couple, so he needs some additional resources in there.
So, the next up is science. Dr. Thomas will tell us about her work in science.
Okay. So, I've had the opportunity for the last two years, actually, to work with a great group of pilot teachers with the K-4 science materials. And this is a total of 11 teachers that represent each of the elementary schools in the district, so we have a representative from each school and actually each grade level. So, last year, we took the time to unpack the new science standards that came out, the Science, Technology, Engineering 2016 framework. And then this year, we decided to look into programs that we could use to implement these new standards or to help with implementation. So, we piloted two programs. The first one was the Inspire Science, which is a McGraw-Hill program, and then the second one is FOS. So, the teachers had an opportunity to work with both of those, and we also made site visits to neighboring districts that are in their first year of implementing both of those programs, so we could see them in action. So, these are results from the pilot survey. Nine teachers responded to this, representing all grade levels, and 71.4% prefer the FOS program. And so, there are some comments up there from the pilot teachers. The FOS program, they felt really helped to establish a collaborative classroom culture for the students. It really supported productive science talk amongst the students. The experiments were engaging and really helped with the science and engineering practices, so I think that's why they were leaning towards the FOS program. One student actually made a comment and said, "I don't need to study science anymore because I'm doing it." So, that was a great comment, and I thought we should have videotaped him and let him sell the program, so. So, why new FOS kits? We really need updated curriculum material to align to the new standards. By getting the new kits, we also get upgraded digital components. So, with the purchase of the new FOS kits, we'll get to have teacher prep videos, teacher tutorial videos, there's also online digital components and virtual investigations for the students as well. And this is a very wordy slide, but this just is detailing some of the features of the FOS kit. It's complete equipment kit, detailed investigation guides for the teachers, which is very easy to follow. There are lots of different ways to assess the students, and includes formative assessments so that teachers can see where students are at with the material throughout the unit. Strategies for the use of science notebooks, so to get all of the students notebooking at a young age, which is a great feature. And then also the online digital interactive components as well. So, the purchase for the K-4 science would be a total of 104,000, and that would be for all three strands of science, so Earth and Space, Physical and Life, and that would be for all four elementary schools, so that all students would have access to the same material. And that does include professional development for all the elementary teachers as well.
So, for PE, Health, and Wellness, that's also included in the curriculum review cycle for this year. Brendan Kent, I'm presenting on behalf of Brendan this evening. So, we piloted our health curriculum, the Michigan model, in grades K through 2 this year. And so, and the standards that we focused on were the social-emotional standards, social-emotional learning standards. So, these SCL standards are from the national framework, but also align with the Massachusetts State framework. And the results and the performance and the behaviors that we're seeing in K-2 and the work that students are doing is just really amazing to see. You know, an example of things that they do are, you know, one of the, one of the things, one of the units are they, you know, kids in grade one take time to really talk about how to take the perspective of other students. How can they think about how, what other students need, and how are they feeling, and how does it affect their learning? And they're able to do this really remarkably well and support one another really remarkably well. And so, we're also piloting the Michigan model in grade 6. And our plan is to really investigate if we can expand this, and over time, I'm particularly proud of Brendan's work in this area in health. We've kind of doubled the number of years that we're offering health in Wakefield in the last three years. So, you know, kudos to Brendan and to the health teachers as well. I also don't want to miss this opportunity to share how proud I am of the work that both Jennifer and Erin have done, and what they're not telling you is that, I don't know if you noticed, but, you know, the proposal that we're making tonight for the FOS science curriculum is a K-4 proposal. You'll notice that, I don't know if you remember, that Jen is a 5 through 12 curriculum coordinator, and so she has kind of taken on K through 4 work. We don't have a K through 4 science curriculum coordinator, but she's kind of taken this work on over not a one-year period. So, last year was our science curriculum review, right, based on our curriculum review cycle. But teachers have said, at the elementary level and principals at the elementary level, have said, you know, can we kind of slow this down? We've taken on a lot of curriculum at the elementary level in the last number of years. Can we expand our work into next year? And can we have someone help us and support us in doing a pilot? Can we have someone check in with us and observe classes? And can we do professional development before and during the pilot? And can it be part of the five-part series? So, these are all adaptive changes that we've made to support the elementary teachers, and I think that they have really responded tremendously. And I think Jen has been very, you know, has been terrific in really working and collaborating with our K-4 population, so that's really worked well. And kind of Erin's work this year, so, you know, one of the things that has changed for us is that, you know, you might have noticed on one of the slides that she talked about classroom observations. Because what's implied always with new curriculum is what instructional practices are also used and tested in the field before these new curriculums are published, okay? So, what they're doing is they're working with teachers during the pilot to talk about and broach the subject of not only curriculum standards and new programs, but what instructional strategies are we also working on as a group? So, there's some curriculum coaching that's happening here, some instructional coaching that's happening here, but there's also kind of an adaptive piece where they have really gone out of their way to work continually with the principals and with the teachers to say, how can we best serve you? What questions do you have to really dig deeply into these materials to think about what might help you do your best work? And what might help students also do their best work? So, they have really been amazing, and I can't thank them enough for their work, so thank you. So, the overall, the total proposal for the 1819 school year for world languages was shared on a prior slide, is about $123,000. For science, it's $104,000. For health and wellness, it's $5,400, with a total cost of $232,000, 233, really, if we round it off, which is still a little bit beneath the amount that's allotted annually. So, we're looking to come in lower than the money that's, have been kind of allotted for us, which is $250,000 a year for new curriculum. So, you know, that money is there to take care of any consumables, to take care of any kind of classroom moves. Sometimes when we expand a class or if we have a bubble class, we also absorb those costs through this curriculum line as well. And the other thing that we've done, and I know both Jennifer and Erin have alluded to this, is that we've really tried to differentiate professional development over a longer period of time. When we purchase new curriculums, it comes with a cursory overview, which the company, the publishing company, will come out and do an overview of the curriculum, which is just kind of a look at, you know, these are our products, this is how it works, this is how ExamView Pro works, this is how you can create common assessments, and those are all important things to kind of get teachers going. But what has changed is we've differentiated and we've said, okay, so what will teachers need, or what do we think they'll need, you know, after working with the curriculum for two months? What do we think they'll need after working with the curriculum for 10 months? So, we've tried to kind of map this out over time and also budget for that, and I think the teachers have been really helpful in the pilots in providing us that feedback as well. So, that's our proposal for this evening. I don't know if you have questions? You know, one of the big pieces, just before I take questions, we just want to, again, really say thank you for kind of your ongoing support and the ongoing support of the community to allow us to do this work. So, now I think we can take questions, Chris?
Thank you. Thank all three of you, and certainly all of the teachers that were part of the pilots. It's critical work, and we wouldn't be able to be here making such a comprehensive review if it didn't take the amount of time that we put into it. So, thank you very, very much for the depth of the study. Dr. Smith, do you have anything to add?
No, I just want to say thank you very much. I mean, the work that these curriculum coordinators have done has been essential and incredible, and so thank you so much. I was pleased to see you came in under budget. Nicely done. That always pleases me. I bargained. So, that's also a good thing.
Extra points. Okay, members of the committee, let's count in.
I've got a stack, so don't feel like you're going to maybe hear them all and then answer them as you see, because some of them overlap. With the, start with the foreign language. How much time is going to be needed for our teachers to be able to adopt these things and feel comfortable with that adoption? Because, you know, it's nice to have a new piece, new pieces to work with, but if you throw it at them all at once, they don't know what to do with it. And are there any consumables? I've always regretted, even with my own children, that I always wanted them to take Latin because it may be a dead language, but it's the root of everything else. And I see a great overlap with Latin and science, and I didn't know if anybody ever kind of tried to approach it that way with like a combined Latin-scienc look at something.
Want to talk, Erin? Can talk.
Okay. When you get into the science, I remember, I don't remember how long ago it was, it's got to be at least eight or 10 years when the first time we adopted FOS. And everybody was all excited about it, but the big concern was the expense of the consumables. And, you know, are the consumables about the same as they have been all along for the past several years, or is this more or less intense? I really love the idea of buying one set per class, of books per classroom, because not only is the, you know, the wear and tear on the books is not good to be loving back and forth, but we have always, there's been a lot of conversation about the weight of kids' backpacks and how it's not good for their health, and I really like that idea. And with the, just with the health and wellness stuff, I really want to commend Mr. Kent and little things that I've been noticing lately. Just this afternoon, he sent out some tweets about the difference between, about, I think it was about coercion, I think I read, and trying to teach the kids, you know, the, you know, little subtle things, and is that kind of built into this curriculum as well? I thought that was, you know, some commendable things that he's trying to do with bullying and have kids realize that, you know, some things just aren't okay and they don't have to take it type of thing, and I really, and he's doing it, and with all the And I, I really, and he's doing it over Twitter, which is, you know, kind of getting to people where, where they're coming from. And I really, I really like that, so respond in any order you like.
I was going to just start with your first question about how comfortable do teachers feel adopting new materials? And it's overwhelming, absolutely. If you look at the program that I presented, there are so many resources. It's almost, it's overwhelming looking at all of them. And I think that's just, you really have to look at each individual teacher. Some teachers feel very comfortable with the technology, some are afraid of it. So, I think it's really me knowing my teachers and knowing where they may need help implementing some of those resources into the classroom and supporting them as much as I possibly can with putting them into place. And really, there's been many times this past year that I've gone into the classroom with the teachers, said, let's do this together. And they feel so much more comfortable with me being in the room and was tag-teeing. You know, so if something does falter, I'll be there to kind of scoop it up and help them with that. It's in a, but it's a process. And I think we had our 5-part series today, it was the last day. And we looked at the, we looked at scope and sequence and really just to see how it's actually going to be laid out over the next year. And I think just really taking that time to look at that eases people's minds and just really just reiterate, just take it one step at a time. Adopt one part of the program at a time. Doesn't all have to be, there's so much. Not everything has to be adopted all at the same time.
We do have planners, though.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. Just like little by little, though, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about the consumables?
Okay.
The, they're, the FOS kits do have consumables that will need to be replaced.
They've been in the budget since the first time.
So, it's up there on the slide, too. It's about $12,000 for the consumable and live materials, probably every 2 years.
Which is about what we've been spending, I think.
Yeah, yeah. The, the good thing about getting new kids is that they'll be aligned to the new standards and that teachers will get trained, because it's been a while, so.
It will.
Yeah, we need to have more training for the teachers. So, I think that's a key piece to it.
I think one of the positives with both the science program that we're proposing and the world language materials that we're proposing, you know, these materials are designed to meet a wider range of students, right? And so, they're designed to help students that, that might have a learning disability or that might be an, an English language learner who may want to participate in world language where this might be a third language that they're taking. They might have Spanish as a primary language, English as a second language, and, and then they might have, you know, be participating in a language that is their third. And so, one of the nice things that I think is the accommodations that both of these programs have and the technology links that both of these programs have to try to, to bridge that gap, to make it accessible as well for all students.
Yeah, like if you think about the FOS kits, like, you know, 10 years ago, there was no digital component to it. Well, now they come with an ebook that's online and it's in English and in Spanish. And they come with resources, you know, to differentiate your instruction as well. So, there's a lot more components to it than there were.
The same with even in the world language program. If I'm looking at the instructional tools and the assessment tools that are provided, teachers have the ability to modify those to the, to the interest levels and actually to the academic levels of the students. So, all students can access the vocabulary and the grammar concepts.
I would just, sometime in the back of your mind, it would be, I think it would be great to see some sort of a meld between the Latin and the science. I remember when I was at BU, I participated in a program, it was an invitation-only program where you took chemistry and biology as one course. And there were different pieces of it, and you had 2 different labs and it was considered, you know, you still got 2 sets of credits for it, but it was one course combining both disciplines in it. It, it made it like, brought a lot of relevance to it, I think, for, for me. I just remember, I thought it was an interesting thing to do. And I, I think people would be more interested in Latin if they could tie it to their science work, because it's all there.
You, you should go, you should sit in on Chris's class. You'd be very impressed.
I think you would. It's not, it's not your typical Latin class.
Absolutely not. I'm actually advising him, you know, sorry for his master's at this point. So, I've, I've had the opportunity to observe his class multiple times. But he's teaching in, in a non-traditional way. It's more of a spoken language. He speaks in the target language minimum of 90% of the time. And the kids respond to it. It's, it's, it's not your 1985 Latin class that you're used to. By any means, by any means, it's really enjoyable to be in, it really is.
I can attest to that.
Yes, Isabella's in the class, yes, I've seen her.
In Latin. They happen to both be in the same Latin class, which is not great. But I read the Google Classroom notes and they are in Latin. And it's a whole different way of teaching it.
Actually, that was what he, for his 5-part series, went to different school systems to really to see how they're teaching Latin in a different way. And he's really caught on and he's doing a nice job with it.
He's on a mission.
He is on a mission. He's on a mission.
And, and I, his Latin numbers have increased steadily.
Well, a lot of districts, it's dropping, dropping it.
Yeah, there's no question.
I just have 2 quick questions. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. For the survey with world language, I was just wondering how many children were surveyed and what the age groups were?
Sure.
And the second question, just so I could get it out. Like for 5th grader coming in, could you describe the curriculum a little bit for them?
Absolutely. So, the students that were surveyed were the high school. It was actually Bridget Reed's class, so there were about 30 students who were surveyed. Both of those, I'm not sure if I said this, but all the teachers piloted both programs. So, it wasn't as if some teachers piloted this program, some teachers piloted this program. So, they really got to see the pros and cons to both programs. So, again, there were about 30 teach, I'm sorry, 30 students that were surveyed up at the high school. For the 5th graders coming in, so the 5th graders have a half a year. And within that half a year, they will spend 1 quarter in French and 1 quarter in Spanish. Eduardo Montero teaches the French, Anna Marquez teaches the Spanish. It's really just a brief introductory lessons to both languages. In the past, the past couple of years, students have chosen a language called Turkey. Just really just having some influence from your parents, maybe from your older siblings, what you've just heard in society itself. So, implementing that into the 5th grade, I think, has been really beneficial just to give them a little bit of background, for them to have some ownership of what they feel they'd like to go into. It's a very quick little glance of it, but I think it's enough just to get their feet wet.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs?
Thanks, Tom. Thank you. Erin, it was, it was great to hear you talk about your passion for the work and your role as an advocate. And then you mentioned the fact that the state hasn't updated the foreign language curriculum since 1999. I was thinking about that because we're working on the arts, right? The restoration of the arts curriculum, same, same year, 1999. So, so your advocacy, I think, is just as important as anything for the central role that I think foreign language learning plays in a, in a full education for our kids. So, thank you for that. It was great to hear that. And, and I'm like Chris and the others, I really believe Latin is incredibly important. I mean, I'm, I'm going to question it in a minute and it's going to, my, my family will, will, will laugh at this because I actually still read Tacitus and Seneca and Julius Caesar. I mean, I'm not much of an ancient history geek. But there is a, there is a point of view that says that, and I'm sure you're familiar with this, that, that demography is destiny, right? And that, and that more and more high schools, not only in Massachusetts but across the country, are looking at Mandarin Chinese, right? And Arabic. And so, we're obviously very strong in the Romance languages. And I've asked this before and I, I had a chance to, to talk to you about it. I've talked to Doug about it. But after this cycle of review, is there a chance that we could explore other languages, you know, in a, in a longer-term way? Knowing that it's going to take additional resources, but, you know, that we have a changing country and this is something that we should at least be exploring.
Absolutely. If you do look at some of the other districts in and around our community, they are offering Mandarin.
Yep.
And it is something that I would love to explore. Again, it would entail more resources, funds to, to hire someone. But there's a need, there's a need and necessity for, and I think the more languages, the more options you give students, the better.
Yeah.
The better, yeah.
Thanks. And then just one quick question for Jennifer on the, the K-4 science curriculum. I know that we've been trying to add the, add the A to STEM in some of the other grades. Is there actually, are, or are there curricular resources for arts integration into the STEM curriculum in the early grades that, that we've been able to tap into? And is that something on the, on the agenda at all?
It's not something I've actually really thought too much about.
Okay.
But it's something that we can look into.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I mean, I know components of the FOS program reach into math and ELA, but haven't directly seen anything into the A, into the arts.
Okay, thanks. Just a thought.
Question maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I would say, just to add, though, like not in the early grades, but at the high school level, definitely. With the new engineering offerings that we're offering and the design component with the CAD software.
Right, that's what, that's what made me think about it.
It is making its way there. I haven't really thought about how to make it at the elementary level.
Erin, could you remind me how language works, world language works for the 6 through 8? Because I, I can't remember if it's considered a special or if it's an academic class. There was a switch at one point when one of my daughters, my older one, was in middle school. And she ended up not having as much content. So, I was just curious how that's working.
Sure. Just to give you a little history, when I started back in 1998, we offered world language in 7th and 8th grade. And at that time, it was part of the core academic team. I was on a team with the math, English, social studies and science teacher. And 7th and 8th grade teachers, students had world language every day at that point. We actually, at one point, extended it into the 5th and 6th grade. 5th and 6th graders had it every other day. And then when you transitioned, transitioned into the 7th grade, it was every day. During that transition time from the old galvan to the new galvan, there was a restructuring of the, of the schedule. And in doing so, really popped, unfortunately popped the world language off of team. So, at this point, these students have world language every other day. So, they are on, if, if they're not, they were not on a wheel with the other specialists because they have it every other day for a whole entire year. Many of the specialists, the students will have those classes every other day for a quarter of a year or a half a year. So, yes, we are on the specialist wheel schedule, but it is consistent for the whole year.
And it starts in 6th grade, which is also different, so, right?
So, that's, no, that's starting, so that's starting in 6th grade.
Yeah.
So, from 6th grade on, that's what, so they all have foreign language every other day for the whole year. In 5th grade, it's only a half a year and they switch the 2 languages within that. That actually just started this past year.
In regard to your question, it is an academic core. It's an academic subject.
Right, right. I was, I guess I phrased it incorrectly.
It is, I know. I don't, I don't make to me.
Right, right. And then, in the, in the new curriculum for, for any of the languages, is there more opportunity for the kids to actually learn instruction in that language? In other words, learn about French with the teacher speaking French, you know? Whatever, 80, 90% of the time?
Sure. And that's one of, if you looked at the core practices, that is being supported by the ACTFL, that is something that we're really striving for, is using the language by the students and by the teachers. We would love 90%. It's, it's a struggle sometimes, especially with the younger ones. But studies have shown, the more you're speaking the languages, the more the kids are speaking the language in the classroom, they'll just pick it up so much easier.
Right, right, right. And I just wanted to mention, Jen, that I was really happy to hear about this K-4 curriculum because of the consistency that's built into it for all the elementary schools. And it, it just will feed everyone into the galvan having the same experience and the same kind of content. So, thanks for taking that on. It would be much appreciated, I'm sure.
I've enjoyed working with them. It's been great.
Just a couple of thoughts, just kind of connecting to the kind of company I work for. So, I know obviously it's, it's really hard sometimes when there's a lot of changes or, or big changes. It happens all the time with my company and employees kind of get, you know, tense and, you know, frustrated. But I think you kind of nailed it when you said, just knowing your teachers and how to help them. I think that's really important. So, great job with that. And I think that'll be very important next year, too. And secondly, just kind of thinking back to my 5th grade days, I also think it's very important to, to have both languages, Spanish and French, to kind of see a little background of both and figure out what you want to do for the next couple of years. But I did have one question. I, I didn't have Italian when I was in Wakefield High School, so that's kind of new. What's the, kind of the breakdown of roughly speaking, like as far as the kids and what, the 4 languages?
Of the 4 languages. Overall, so at the, at the middle school level, there are 550 students that take Spanish and 175 that take French. And at the high school level, the Spanish numbers stay pretty consistent, around 550, 560. The French numbers dropped a little bit, around 100. This year, there are 100 students taking Italian and about 95 taking Latin.
Very good. Thank you.
Not to be too specific, right?
Well, because I'm trying to figure out how many books I need and so I know, I know exactly how many I have.
Do any students take both Latin and French and Latin and Spanish?
There are some students that have doubled up. Yes, they have, yes.
Do your favorites, probably.
Colleen?
Yeah, I had a question for Brendan through Doug. I was just curious to hear a little bit more about the social-emotional education going on in the earlier, early elementary years. And how does it look? Because we don't have a designated health class in elementary schools. So, this is taking place during their PE classes. And what percentage of the PE classes, you know, social-emotional wellness and what percentage is dedicated to, you know, physical education?
So, we didn't take time, one of the things that are, you know, we talk about meeting teachers where they are, are PE teachers that are also teaching health have been very flexible and have worked really hard with this. One of their, their asks was, could we please not cut PE time, right? So, through kind of the creative work with the principals, the elementary principals, what they've done is they've kind of created time in the schedule so that they haven't cut PE time, right? They've, they've kind of modified the schedule so that kids can actually get extra time to do health. So, it's, it's, it works out to about 15 classes per grade, which is the reason why we only focused on the social-emotional learning standards. If we had, for example, 45 classes or 90 classes in the course of the year, we could work in more standards, but we had to prioritize, you know, what we thought could be, have the greatest impact and kind of meet the greatest need for our students and for our communities. And so, we decided to focus on social-emotional learning and those standards during that time. But I hope I'm answering your question, Colleen, when you asked, you know, if I understand what, what is the breakdown?
Yeah, I was just wondering where it was taking place.
Yeah, so, so what was happening was, this was a, a block where the teachers were supervising for some PLCs. And so, what they did is they rearranged that supervision so other teachers picked that up so that the PE teachers could come out of that space with children and also kind of get access to kids during that time. So, the elementary principals actually, it worked very closely with Brendan and really created that. You know, the- You know, their challenge now is, how do we do it in grades three and four?
Mm-hmm.
You know, or how do we expand it? And so that's something that we're really working on now, and I alluded to, we're exploring how do we do that? That's where we are.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, certainly, thank you. Thank you, thank all three of you for your work, your presentations, certainly. Again, pass along our thanks to the members, the volunteers or those that were recruited, perhaps, to make your work as successful as your presentations were tonight. If I could take a second while you're still here, and if I may, if I may editorialize a bit, and using both of you as a prime example of how critically important having a curriculum coordinator is to the role and the work for each of the content areas. It has been a discussion, as we know, in the FY19 budget, as a curriculum coordinator for social studies. We're going to be having this sort of conversation once, if and when the budget is approved and that begins, but this is an example, I think, to speak to the depth and quality of having someone who is dedicated, experienced, has depth, has classroom-based knowledge, has content knowledge, training and evaluation, supervision, supporting teachers in their learning practice. It's critical to the success of each of the content areas, and I think the work that you've both done in your time with us, never mind in the last year in these piloting projects, really speak to the critical importance of having really dedicated staff. So, my editorializing is done, but thank you for that work and your presentations tonight.
Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you guys very much. And feel free to go home, you deserve it.
Sounds like maybe Wayne let up a little bit.
I know.
So I just have one item under my other comments. I included in your packet the information that the Wakefield Public Schools was honored again with the best, as one of the best communities for music education by the NAMM Foundation for its outstanding commitment to music education. Wakefield's one of the 4% of the districts across the nation and one of 14 school districts in Massachusetts receiving this prestigious award. This is the sixth time in the last seven years that Wakefield's been recognized with this award. The Best Communities in Music Education Award really affirms districts that have demonstrated exceptional efforts towards maintaining music education as part of schools' core curriculum. And I think that's fantastic. It talks a little bit in that document about how Wakefield is recognized as leading the way in, with the learning opportunities as outlined in the ESSA, or Every Student Succeeds Act. And then it just goes on to make a couple of other comments, which I just think are important to note, which, that there were a series of landmark studies by scientists and researchers at Northwestern University to really just demonstrate the link, and it wasn't found, it was found to be significant, between students and community music programs and lifelong academic success. In addition, the benefits of early exposure to music education, improving how the brain processes and assimilates sounds and how that works and how those traits last well into adulthood. And basically, beyond that research, many other studies have indicated that music education lays the foundation for individual excellence in group settings, promotes growth mindset, aids in creative problem solving and flexibility in work situations, and shows students how to give and receive quality feedback to excel. So I just want to really, you know, send my kudos to Tom Bankert and thank the music teachers in Wakefield, all of our students, certainly the music boosters and parents and members of the community that have supported our music program so strongly over the past years. So congratulations to our music department. And that is it for my remarks tonight.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, moving on, budget items. We have gifts this evening, Mr. Pivlin?
Mr. Chairperson, there are no gifts this evening.
Very nice. Thank you. Now, now we have something else to consider into the nomenclature mix from the business administrator himself. Oh, very good. So moving on to subcommittee reports, finance and facilities. Chris?
Nothing new. Hopefully, we have a good turnout of support at town meeting on April 30th. I don't, do you know, Dr. Smith, what number we are on the warrant?
For which?
When will our budget come up?
Budget is in Article I.
Article I, so.
Special education stabilization in Article 10.
Okay. So it's, you know, certainly should come up on the first night of town meeting, April 30th, and I hope we have, you know, a strong support from the general public.
Very good. Thank you. For the labor report tonight, I appear to be a man without a committee. Mr. Tirow and Ms. Morgan were the other members of this committee. What I would like to do with the committee's indulgence is to, for an interim period between now and when we reorganize the full committee structure, would be to seek volunteers to populate that committee for the exclusive task of negotiating a superintendent contract with Mr. Lyons. So my recommendation, or my ask, if this is acceptable, would be that if anyone is interested in being on that, please just shoot me an email, and we will populate the committee, and I'll make that as an announcement. Our work would be just to let folks know what I'm imagining, speculating, would that it would be our goal to begin and conclude the negotiations by the end of May. So there would be a, probably, some busy times in the first couple of weeks with the subcommittee work, meeting with Mr. Lyons, and then meeting ourselves, and then, of course, reporting back to the full committee. Obviously, the subcommittee would be empowered to make no decisions, but to sort of facilitate that, the contract negotiate, if you will. And then we would seek to approve the contract probably, maybe the first meeting in June, for the sake of the ballpark, giving folks a sense of what that work might look like. So, if any two members are interested, please just shoot me an email, and we can begin that negotiation. Policy and planning, Ann.
Well, it looks like we have a charge to.
A new charge.
A new charge to talk about perhaps, you know, adjusting some of our language to be more not gender-specific. And I, now that all of this other business is done, I have to, I'm gonna put together a couple of things that I need to present to the full committee on a couple policies that we're just needing to update and one we need to create. So I'll be doing that for the next meeting.
Okay. Great. Very good. Item number 11, future dates and agenda items. What this is, just for Colleen and Amy to make note, that this is sort of an open-ended part, this appears on every agenda, but it's just a note saying when our next scheduled meeting is, but it's also an opportunity for any member who would request that an item B appear on a future meeting, as in the future meeting agenda pieces. So it sort of tips off the superintendent, of course, and the business administrator and the chair about what a topic you may like to hear about or like I've reported on. The best lines of communications are those that are open and clear and transparent, and no surprises for the superintendent. That isn't fair and reasonable in our way, but we certainly want to make sure that, so that's what this is. This is a, an opportunity to request future dates or agenda items.
Okay.
Yes, please?
I just wanted to let the committee know, the last few years, the first meeting in May was the one in Boston that we held a meeting in Boston for our MECO families. This year, it'll be the second meeting in May, which is 22nd, I think? So May 22nd, we'll be hosting our school committee meeting in Boston for our MECO families.
School committee comments, this is the part, and you may, Colleen and Amy may have seen just go around the table and make notes, or comments of things that are important or relevant to the day and time, and there's no particular order. So I will start with Mr. Massey.
All right. Now, I just want to congratulate again, Colleen and Amy. You guys worked very, very hard, and congratulations on that. I'm sure you're very excited and all exhausted, so. Again, if you have any questions at all, don't hesitate to call or reach out at any time.
Colleen?
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank everyone for a warm welcome and support throughout our campaign. The support was there, it was definitely a group effort, and I'm very excited to begin new work. It's definitely something new and challenging, and I'm really excited to sort of put the experience that I have into this new role. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Let me go, Amy. I know you were fine.
Thank you. So bad. Congratulations, Colleen. I just, please know that I'm grateful, and I'm really looking forward to working with this committee as a team. And, you know, I plan to take this role very seriously, and I really appreciate the opportunity. So, thank you.
Greg?
Thanks. I want to add my congratulations to Colleen and Amy, too. You both ran really excellent campaigns, and you're both obviously really passionate advocates for children, and very much welcome your participation on the school committee, and really look forward to working with you both. Also want to congratulate my neighbor, Julie Smith-Galvin, for her election to the Board of Selectmen, now the town council. Boy, that's gonna take a little while to get used to. She's just a terrific person and a very strong advocate for public education. And congratulate, of course, our friend Paul Tanaco for being reelected and all the, and really thank all of those who ran for public office. It's not easy, and we rely as a community on volunteers, and so very much appreciate everyone's civic engagement and everyone who came out to vote. So, that's it. Thanks.
I, too, look forward to working with Colleen and Amy. So, welcome aboard, and as RJ said, reach out. Please reach out with any questions that you have. I may not be the most expert, since I'm only a year in, but I'll do my best to help you in any way or direct you to the folks who know more than I do. So, welcome.
Again, thank you to our new, welcome to our new members, and thank you to those people who also ran and were, you know, not successful this time. I hope that they would run again in the future. We certainly were very fortunate to have a lot of very high-quality candidates for all of our offices, so the town has been in good shape. Well, thank the committee for their confidence, their place to meet tonight, and I hope to work hard for you.
Dr. Smith, do you have anything?
Just welcome to Colleen and Amy. So glad to have you. I know our time together, it may not be very long, but we'll make it really great quality time. So welcome and congratulations.
Great. Mike?
I hope our time together is longer.
Very well said. Very well said, sir.
Welcome. Welcome. Congratulations.
And let me just also, you know, echo what my colleagues have said in both, not only welcoming you, congratulating you, as well as, as very appropriate remarks about everyone that ran. It isn't easy. It isn't always fun, but it's important work. Volunteerism is a critical part of civic life and making things happen, right? There was, a wise man once said, you know, "Communities are run by those who show up." So the critical, important part of what we all do is to bring that part to life. I, too, also joining Chris and thanking the members of the committee for your support and confidence in my capacity to be able to lead this August group, of course, the course of the next year, and we've got a busy year ahead, lots to do. We always have a busy year, it seems like, but next year will be a particularly busy one with lots of new and exciting faces around town, around the school department. So there's a lot to do, and I thank you for the support in being chair. I'd like to also point out just to the community, if anyone may have seen, Dr. Smith issued a community bulletin this afternoon, just sort of peppering Wakefield families with town meeting on Monday night. It has some highlights and some bullets points about some of the depth and value of the budget that's being voted on, so I would suggest that that may be something that those of us may want to cut and paste and email it around to friends and encourage attendance at town meeting. It's a very nicely worded, half dozen or eight or so bullets, or maybe put it on Facebook and post it just to let people even be more transparent. This went out to the Wakefield community, the school families.
All parents, right. All school families.
So perhaps if we find that, we can push it out even further. So, very good. Thank you again, and if there are a motion to adjourn, Mr. Callahan?
The school committee adjourns meeting of April 25th, 2018.
Second?
Second? No. It's a question mark.
Space made in second, and all in favor. All passes unanimously. Good night, everyone. Good evening.